Good morning.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning. We'll give everyone a chance to settle in. Good to see you all this morning, all the excitement that living in Montgomery County, Alabama, brings to this body. Okay. As always, we like to start our meetings off with a word of prayer, so if you all would join me, please, let your spirits be as one this morning. Father God, we come before you this morning, and first of all, we just want to say thank you for grace and mercy. Thank you, Lord God, for the gift of life and for another day. This is the day that you have made. We have already declared and decreed that we shall rejoice and be glad, and we'll just glad, like David said, because of the joy of the Lord, it caused him to be more glad than the time his barns were filled with plenty, and there were wine flowing, and the grapes were just in abundance. Even with all of that, it was nothing that could compare to the joy of the Lord that he was experiencing. So we just thank you, Father, that the joy of the Lord is our strength today, and we ask that you would be with us in this body, be with those who have attend, who are in attendance, and we pray that your spirit, Lord God, your spirit will prevail in all that we do in this body this day. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
During our information session, we'll hear from Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Finance Director Cheryl Thomas, Grant Administrator Regina Walker, and Director of Risk Management Melissa Peak. We will go over the items to be considered in the formal session. We'll consider an alcohol license application for a special event for a Latino festival for October 9th and 16th. Consider a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds relating to manufacturing facility for manna beverages and ventures, and approve a project agreement and miscellaneous agreements and actions. Consider a proposal from DBE Consulting to promote and achieve the goals of the Montgomery County Commission's Minority and Women-Owned Business Initiative. Consider a contract agreement for professional services with E-Ring Software Solutions. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have any additions?
Florence, 2,000 for the Lacey Ford New Year Day Parade. New Year's Day Parade.
Anything else? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
Consider, Florence, I guess I'm the only one that's didn't get this in on a timely manner. Johnny Carr Middle School, 2,500 for the Dan's Team. And Floyd Middle Magnet, 2,500 Principal Discretionary.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Let's see, what, what, did you get my two additional? For ASU?
Yes. For volleyball and basketball?
Yes.
Consider establishment of a maintenance worker position at pay grade SMO 3, and abolishment of the service maintenance worker 2 position in the county pay plan. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for corrections officer trainee and an inmate grievance disciplinary clerk. Consider a position fill request for the District Attorney's Office for an Assistant Records Coordinator. Consider a position fill request for the Engineering Department for a Civil Engineering Technician 2. Consider position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for two Deputy Sheriff Corporals and an auto servicer. Consider a position fill request for support services for a mailroom and stores clerk. Consider position fill request for the youth detention facility for two juvenile detention officers. Consider travel training requests for appraisal, engineering, parks and recreation, risk management, and the juvenile court. As an item of O business, consider resolution and draft beneficiary agreement regarding the YMCA of Greater Montgomery for improvements to recreational facilities. Sheriff Cunningham.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to consider the item 20 today?
Item 20, well, is that the O business?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I have to, at this point, I think it's appropriate, pardon me, Sheriff, to at least voice a concern with this particular resolution. It's come to my attention that these, these funds are represented in the contracts and in the attachments as a part of Montgomery Thrive, which is a joint effort of the city and the county in, in spending ARPA funds. My understanding is that the city's portion, which is $3.1 million, is not coming from our ARPA funds. And the contract clearly indicates that that's what, that's the case, but it really isn't the case. And our funds are coming from ARPA funds, and I am not convinced that the spending, that what we're going to do, building pickleball courts at the Emory Farmer Soccer Field, is not really appropriate under the provisions of ARPA. But I'm going to be objecting to this mainly because the, the city's not using ARPA funds on this matter, and this matter's supposed to be a part of that agreement, where we both using ARPA funds on it, and the county's supposed to. And I'm not really convinced that this is the proper use of the funds.
Commissioner, there's one that we know.
And I want to be, I want to make sure that's on record in a minute.
Yeah, there's, no pickleball will be built at Emory Farmer Soccer Complex.
Well, we need to change, we need to change the, the beneficiary appendage agreement. Have you read that?
Yes, sir, I have read that.
Well, here it is. This is what you're going to vote on today, and I can, I can read it to people so that they'll know what it says here. It says, the total here is $6.2 million, and the last item is six pickleball courts with restroom buildings.
That shouldn't have been on there, because that was the first thing I could watch.
It's on here, Doug, it's on here, and it's on here to be voted on today, and, and my objection is clear. You can say that it's not supposed to be on there, but it's on there, and you told me that you want to vote on it today. And I'm telling you that I'm going to object to it, because I don't think it's proper use of the funds.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I don't know of any pickleball leagues in my district, so I can't support it anyway, even if we weren't spending our ARPA funds on it.
And just to answer your question about pickleball, actually, your district has one of the locations that has been mentioned as far as having pickleball.
I said I don't know of any pickleball leagues or teams in my district, and I don't.
There's not any in Montgomery right now.
I want to make sure that, that, that's recorded and that's on record.
Yes, sir, and I will point out, just for clarification, the beneficiary agreement is a draft, and the resolution authorizes the chairman or designee to, to work through the terms of the beneficiary agreement. Again, I, I just want to make, clarify.
Thank you for that, but it's got draft written all over it, but we're voting on it. And this, this is what you're working from. There's no mention of anything else but this. It's.
Well, Commissioners, I'm sure during our ARPA, there's going to be situations where we're the county, which we have the, our own ARPA allocation. There's going to be instances where we're going to spend money on something that the city is not going to spend ARPA money on.
Well, let's just do that, let's just move that outside of Montgomery Thrive then. This is voiced and, and framed inside of Montgomery Thrive. It mentions the city's money from ARPA, it mentions the county's money from ARPA. You can't dress this up, Doug.
Well, nobody's told me from the city they're not using ARPA money. I don't know.
They've told me, the mayor has told me.
The mayor didn't tell me that.
Well, he told me that.
My understanding is they already put in.
They had a bond issue. I know they got a bond issue. But we don't have a bond issue.
Well, my, my point, yes, exactly, you know, and, 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 and this agreement, the way it's drawn up is not actually the way that things are going to happen. So I, I, I'm just objecting. I want, I just want to be on the record for it.
And one, one last thing, Ms. Chairman, if I may, we, we had a length of discussion about this. I don't want to, to rehash what we talked about last time, but it seems that if we're going to, the city going to do something, and the county going to do something else, it seems like it defeats the purpose of having the Montgomery Thrive initiative in the first place. And we did sign on, it's supposed to be a legal binding document, we signed on with the city to have a joint initiative for the $85 million to address those issues that was going to help us mitigate the negative impact of COVID all over the city and the county. We talked about the minority community, underserved communities, how they were disproportionately impacted compared to other communities when it came to, to the pandemic, but yet we hadn't done anything in those communities that suffered disproportionately, but we want to go out to Emory Farmer and build, really, they don't seem to need anything to me, based upon my visit out there, my observation. It seems like if we were going to do anything, we would have started with the YMCO on Cleveland Avenue and addressed some of those issues. It really fits, fits Treasury definition more so than what's happening, what we plan to do out at Emory Farmer. We got underserved community, low-income community, qualified census tract, and nothing, you know, over there necessarily to address outdoor activities, and so that's, that, those are my comments, but I would really be in favor of maybe getting out of the contract that we have, because if the county going to go their own way on some things, and the city going to go their own way, we've misled, misled the people in terms of what we wanted to do. So, you know, I would certainly be in favor of getting out of that contract, and I think it'd probably be more effective and efficient, and it would better serve those people who have been disproportionately impacted. If this commission take the balance of the ARPA fund and just divided it amongst the five of us, and then we can go about our business serving our people the way they need to be served.
Well, thank you for that. You know, the second thing we did, the second resolution we did involved, actually, the Sheriff's Department, because we agreed to the body cams. The Montgomery Police Department never did submit anything, but Sheriff Cunningham was out front with that, and we agreed to do that regardless of whether the city was going to do body cams for the police department. So we have done some things outside of joint with the city, but.
Are you saying, are you saying that agreement was outside of ARPA?
No, it was in ARPA.
Well, what are you saying?
What I'm saying is, we agreed to spend three.
No, 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 but that was, you're not, we got to do apples to apples here now. Either, either it was inside of ARPA or was outside of ARPA.
It was inside of ARPA, and we agreed to 1.5 million, right?
Right, right.
But the police department did 1.5 million of their own for the police department body cams. Some of it is separate than us.
Nobody, I, if they didn't spend ARPA funds on that.
They did.
Well, they did, so, so what's, that's different from here. They're not spending ARPA funds on this. You, 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 you're not comparing apples to apples here.
So anything that.
There's no, there's no way to confuse this. It's, it's clear. It's black and white. I've read this thing. I've read it all the way through. I know what the Y want to do with the money. I don't know what the other back agreements have been made. I know there's been some. I don't know what they're about, but I, I do know that, what I've read. And what I've read would indicate to me that we're, we're about to spend $3.1 million in ARPA funds to build pickleball courts.
No pickleball again, Commissioners.
You can't change it from, you, you got it on the, on the agenda, Doug.
Okay, can, can we take?
Can I ask a question? Excuse me, I hate to interrupt both of you. Can I ask a question? I'm the newbie on the court, and I know all of this was unfortunately decided before I came along. So let me ask a question. I know I met with Commissioner Sankey, and we met with Gary Cobb a couple, last, week before last, about Rosa Parks, and Rosa Parks has already started a venture that they plan on doing, but they need assistance. So is there not any way that we can go back in that ARPA, in ARPA money and make sure that they get assistance to help the underprivileged on that side of town?
I'm all for it, 100%. As I told Commissioner Sankey in his office when we met, after we met with Gary Cobb, I'm all for helping Cleveland Avenue, Kershaw, I'm all for helping every kid organization that we possibly can. I'm all for that, 100%.
So, so now, community centers, another question. Community centers are up in this, this agreement. Am I not right in this agreement? We're supposed to be doing community centers. This one just this?
This is, yeah, and, and that's, and that really is a huge concern of mine. Already, we spent money on mental health, and, 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 and I supported that. We spent money on the body cams, and I supported that. We, we only had 40-something million apiece, and I agree with you, Doug, we're not going to spend all of our 40-something million in this Montgomery Thrive. Some of it is going to be spent outside of Montgomery Thrive. So we've already spent roughly $20 million. Pretty soon, we're going to spend, we'll spend $30 million collectively together. And at some point, when this time comes to do the community centers, which is something for two generations, two generations, our young people in Montgomery County have been neglected. The chickens are coming home to roost now. All of this youth violence and all this stuff, it is a direct result of doing away with community center organized activities for young people in the summer after school. That's what it's, so we're trying to correct two generations of problems here. It keeps getting put back. I'm not against tennis. I'm not against pickleball. I'm not against any of that, but it has to get in line. Number one should be addressing the problems that we're having with youth violence and doing, and stopping it right now. 40 years is enough. It's time to spend, and what I'm afraid of is at some point, after we bought, bought body cams, after we sent money on mental health, after we built pickleball courts, then we don't have enough money to do the community centers. We haven't spent a dime on them yet, and that was the first thing we talked about. And the last time I talked to Montgomery Thrive, they're talking about doing a study. A study of what? We know what we want. We know what we need. We don't need a study. Enough is enough. Let's, let's spend the money where the money was intended to be spent. And if the Y needs some improvements, the Y gets plenty of money from this commission, and plenty of money from the city. They don't need to spend this ARPA money on the Y. There are plenty of, of nonprofits that have approached me. One that I, that's near and dear to my heart has approached me and for money, but this money is not for them. This money is for people that really need it. This is an opportunity for us to do something, things that we wouldn't ordinarily do with the money that we generally collect. And we need to do it. We need to, this is the chance to do it, and we need to do it. And that's why I'm, I'm holding down this position. I've been trying to get these things done for 10 years, and for 10 years I've been put off, and I'm getting, look like I'm about to be put off again, and that's another generation of our young people running around the streets with nothing to do but join gangs and, and do all these crazy things instead of getting, getting involved in organized activities, things that are going to build futures for them.
Commissioners, I grew up in the community centers. I grew in the boys' club. I'm 100% supportive of community center and boys' clubs, but based on what you're saying is, if we, this commission decides that we want to do something to help community centers, and the city says, no, we're not going to use ARPA money for community centers, that means we would not be able to help our community centers. Is that correct?
No, no, because quite frankly, and, and there are witnesses here, before we even decided to go with the ARPA, I was proposing to build a community center for, for the county on its own, through our own Parks and Rec Department, because the city was dragging their feet, feet, and has been for years, and aren't going to do it. We have our own Parks and Recreation Department. My entire district, every square foot is inside of the city limits of Montgomery County. So why can't we have our own community centers as, as a Parks and Rec? And I was proposing that, and had started to look for private sites for it. So no, that's not true. We can do it as a county commission, and I was going to support it and push it, and had the support. Thought I had yours.
I'm all for community center. I wish I had a community center in District 5, Commissioner Sankey, from the day he started on this commission.
Well, let's, let's not start that, Doug. Let's not start that. Let's not start that. I understand that, I understand that, that, that's, that's, that's a movement too, you know, who, that's, that's just another way to cause dissension and, and, and disagreement. If you get one, I want one. We don't want to go that route. We've, we already have a plan. Let's go with that plan. There's been no talk about you get one, I get one. We have a plan. Let's start spending money on it. Let's move forward with it. Let's stop putting all these little things in front of it, so that we spend all the money, and we'll have that excuse, no, we don't have enough money to do it now.
Okay, Sheriff, thank you. You ready?
Hold on now. This is a whole different discussion now. I'm up here for something else. Yeah. On a different, well, good morning, everybody. All right. Today, I'm wearing my pink shirt because it's Cancer Awareness Month, and we're, we're, we're making sure that everybody know that the Sheriff's Office is, is very supportive of those that are going through or have went through with cancer. So that's what we're doing. We're just bringing awareness. Florence, what, what we got?
Sorry, you're here to discuss an increase in public safety communications operator and dispatcher salaries.
Yeah, that was given to us through personnel, city, county personnel did a study, and they came back with a proposal. The study was done for the city dispatchers, and since they had it out there, and they were, they're about to go to this, they wanted to make sure that we followed suit, or we were in line with it, so we won't get into the, the competition of taking one dispatcher from here, moving from job to job, so I brought it to you all. This is what the city's going to, and you can see how far behind we are with the salaries as it relates to our emergency communication operators. The only thing I'm asking you all is to do is make sure that we're in line with them.
Those jobs, they share the same job description, don't they?
Yeah. But I have still got to get, you know, you all to approve it.
I, I understand that. I, I don't have any objection.
Thank you.
Next agenda.
I believe that's all, Sheriff.
I'm going to go back in, sit down.
Finance Director Cheryl Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one item. It's, we have hired or selected a candidate for the Payroll Benefits Assistant in the Finance Department. She currently works with the county, and it's, the job is the same pay grade. She's currently at a pay grade 5, so I'm asking for that approval, plus I'm asking for one extra step. She brings to the job a lot of experience, and she's involved with things we do now through the Election Department, so I'm asking for a step six for her.
Any questions? The next agenda.
Thank you.
Cheryl.
Grant Administrator Regina Walker has two waived rule items to consider.
Good morning.
Morning.
Our first item I brought up, Parks and Rec Director, we received a grant award on yesterday, notification for R C and D Council Grant to do a pavilion at Enzo, Enzo? Wayne Ezner Park, so that's the first item you have to approve. If you have any questions, James, if you.
What's R C and D?
Mid-South R C and D.
Oh, oh. How much does it get?
Seventeen.
And what's the total cost? Is that a match required for that reason?
Seventeen thousand, two hundred.
Are they going to split it all, then?
Where is Enzo Park?
It's in South Montgomery, down the South Montgomery County line.
On 331?
Uh, it's, uh, Mayor Weather Trail.
Okay.
There's no match?
No, sir.
Is there any objection to waiving rules?
No objection on this end.
No objection.
Okay.
Thank you.
And your other one?
The second waived rule item you have is a traffic grant from Adeka. It was also awarded on yesterday. We can get up to $100,000. That is where you will see clicker ticket, hotspot policing, which is determined by the University of Alabama Center for Advanced Public Safety. So the deputies at the Sheriff's Office work those designated areas to help make sure we save, prevent injury, those kinds of things. So this is that year's contract renewal. And there's no match.
So the grant just pays salaries?
It pays overtime.
Overtime.
Yes, sir.
No question, ma'am.
Any objection to waiving rules?
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Next, we'll hear from Melissa Peak, our Director of Risk Management.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here to present several items concerning our annual insurance renewals. The first one, I believe, is the life insurance proposal from Stark Insurance. Just to give you a little bit of background, our county-paid life insurance is currently with MetLife, and this is something that we acquired last year with Alliance Insurance Group. Over the course of the year, we have had a lot of difficulty in managing this product with MetLife. There were a lot of changes, I guess, within that corporation. I know that we were not the only ones affected by this. There've been mass billing issues, issues with coverage, which, you know, that, that's critical when you write an insurance policy, and the administration has firsthand knowledge of just the various issues that have come up. So we've kind of lost faith in MetLife to be able to properly insure and handle the, the life insurance risks for the county. I went to Alliance and asked them to try to find us a different product, which they did put it out to their market, and unfortunately, the MetLife was the best that they could come up with unless we wanted to pay $20,000 more. So I approached our property and casualty insurance carrier, Stark Insurance, to see what type of markets that they had, that they, they could maybe get us into, and they were able to find a product for us that is slightly cheaper and a little bit better coverage with actually Colonial Insurance, Colonial Life Insurance. So I am presenting this today for your review and consideration.
Any questions from Melissa?
Melissa, you still of the opinion that we cannot do any better in terms of rate and overall coverage for the number of policies that we have? Now, we have policy for everything that you, one might consider that might have the potential to be a risk. Going through the Alabama Association of County Commissioners and pooling our resources, you still of the opinion that that does not save us any money?
I'll be honest, I have not had the opportunity to explore the ACCA products. That is something that came out a few years ago, and I've officially been in this director role for about four months. So with our insurance renewals coming up, I didn't really have time to research and explore those options, but that is certainly something I am planning to do for the, the coming year. However, with, with this particular life insurance product, this is a three-year rate guarantee, so the rates will not change for three years, and there, there are some benefits to this particular product that we did not get with the MetLife. We have an additional employee assistance program with this, and we have servicers just up the road who are willing to, to be here and help us with, with any of our insurance needs.
So, yeah, I'm always for local, if they're qualified.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I know the power that the. So, yeah, I'm always for local, if they're qualified. Uh, yeah, but I know the power that the, uh,
Power in numbers.
Yeah, the, the, the association has that power that, you know, could perhaps save us some money. I would encourage you to, to get with someone over there at your earliest convenience.
Yes. Uh, I'm, I, I have, I, I have been researching the options, um, ju, you know, if anything for, you know, comparison. And, um, that, that is definitely something I'm going to look into for next year.
Melissa, thank you for all you're doing with all of these different, uh, policies and issues that we have in the risk management shop. Commissioner Sankey, typically we have found that the, the, looking at ACCA, typically we have found that that benefits smaller counties more than it benefits the larger counties. Uh, I would be interested to know that that was true or not here because the smaller counties can group together and bigger counties, we have a lot more, um, opportunities working directly with the providers. Uh, but thank you for the work that you've done the last four months. Um, I've certainly been impressed with the way that you've stayed on top of things. It's a very complicated and important piece of what we do here. So I appreciate your work.
And, and Commissioner Sankey, one thing about the ACCA is that i, if, if I am correct in my thinking, it is a group of, of the counties within Alabama. However, when you go outside to a, an agency or an actual insurance company, you are actually sharing the risk with a greater pool. Um, so that can also, uh, affect the rates. But I will certainly check into that and, you know, give, give you all a comparison.
Thank you.
Next agenda for that.
Next agenda on that one. Yes, ma'am. All right, Melissa.
The, item number four, the excess workers' compensation renewal.
Okay. All right. So, um, the next item is the excess workers' compensation insurance renewal. Uh, as you know, we, we are self-insured for our workers' compensation claims, uh, up to, uh, if I remember correctly, um, five hundred thousand for regular, just, um, county employees and seven hundred and fifty thousand for law enforcement. Um, this insurance is to help, um, subsidize the costs if we do have an, an insurance or work comp claim that exceeds those amounts. Um, and luckily, there is absolutely no change i, in this, in this renewal this year. This is a flat renewal, uh, and the rates are at the exact same as they were last year.
We don't really have any claims on this, do we?
No, we don't.
Yeah.
We, it, it, from what I saw in reviewing the prior claims, it has been a long time since we've had to use this insurance.
But it's good to have what we have.
Well, right, because we do have law, you know, law enforcement, you know, that they are, they are at risk. Yeah. Hope we never use it, but it's good to have.
I'm not questioning the need for it. Some insurers, whether you have any claims or not, they like to raise the premium.
I know. I know. And I think that that's what happened last year, um, but just because of market conditions at that time. Um, when, whenever, you know, you, you have an economy impacted financially, you're, you know, you're going to find things like that happen. Uh, I'm not an actuary, so how they come up with those numbers, uh, is, is, is in a different realm than what I do. But, um, th, this has been a stable product for us this year.
I mean, next agenda.
Um, next item is the medical stop-loss insurance renewal.
Okay. So similarly, like our workers' comp, we have an insurance policy that covers us for excess medical claims. If we, because we are self-insured for our medical insurance claims. And if we have a significant, um, heaven forbid, we have an employee has a significant, um, medical condition, um, this insurance helps us subsidize that, that loss.
That was something I couldn't get from that. What, what is the per claim, uh, out of pocket?
On the medical?
Yes.
Um, I, the per claim out of pocket, I think is two hundred and fifty thousand.
And then the stop-loss kick in?
I'm sorry, two seventy-five.
And then the stop-loss kick in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And in fact, you know, it, we did receive a claim payment this past year. Uh, we, we did have a loss this year.
You could do that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So in this proposal, they, they have increased the, the premium. Um, but we got back ninety-four thousand last year for that one claim. And we have the opportunity to get more refunds.
How does that work? Is that some reinsurer back there? What, how do you get the ninety-four thousand back from, uh, a claim that we had?
It's this, it's this insurance. It's the stop-loss.
We paid over the two seventy-five and we got the ninety-five?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir. And with this particular product that I'm proposing, we have the opportunity to get additional premium refunds if our claim experience is good. Um, the other product that was quoted by Alliance does not have that option. And sometimes we have been able to get back as much as like thirty, forty thousand dollars. So I, I like keeping that, that incentive um, in the insurance terms. This year, they predict that we'll get back ninety-three hundred dollars, but we, we expect it to be more than that. So with, with this particular product, um, even though the net, uh, well, the net premium increase is, is eleven thousand dollars if you take in what is predicted to be a refund. But, you know, we got ninety-four thousand back on a, on a claim last year. So i, in my mind, that, that's kind of a wash.
Next agenda.
And the final is the property and casualty insurance renewal.
All right. So in your agenda pocket, I did include a, a comparison summary, the expiring program versus what is proposed for this year, uh, for the renewal year. Um, included in this is our public entity excess liability, our property insurance and the cyber liability. Um, the excess liability insurance is to, um, cover liability claims, uh, brought forth against the county. Uh, this year they are requesting a ten percent increase. Um, this is something that they are at, are quoting to all of their members because the reinsurance has gone up. So the reinsurance treaty, um, ha, has, has gone up to ensure this group fund.
So that'd be about seventy-five thousand total when it's in your budget? The total in fact, for all three.
Oh, no, I think that's. Yes, the total for all three. And the increase in the property insurance, um, is due to our property values have increased. We were actually underinsured by fifty million dollars.
Any questions?
You look, you look a little surprised.
Let me ask you. Melissa, on the liability insurance, you know, the maximum that they can get unless it's a civil rights violation is a hundred thousand. The, the, the insurance companies in the past, when I talked to them, that pretty much.
Yes, but this, the, the, but this coverage also includes employment practices liability and management liability, which is not included in, that is a separate liability. Um, that, that is not included, uh, that, that's not part of the, um, the statute.
Under, under, no, under the statute, the maximum you can get from a government entity, the city or the county is a hundred thousand dollars unless it's, it's a Title VII civil rights violation under due process.
Actually, from, from what I read, and I can pull the statute, it's a hundred, three hundred and a hundred. Hundred.
It's a hundred per claim, three hundred total, like if they're a multitude. I mean, I've been doing this since eighty-six and I can tell you that right now. We've never, ever, any claim or any lawsuit filed that limited to a hundred thousand per person, per claim.
Okay. Uh, that, that's something that we can certainly discuss because I, and I, I have the statute. I've read it. It's a hundred per person for bodily injury.
That's right.
Three hundred total bodily injury and one hundred property damage claim. So someone can have a bodily injury claim and a property damage claim, uh, in, in the same occurrence.
Okay. I, that's, I don't know. So far, the Alabama Supreme Court disagrees with you, but that's okay.
Okay. But when it comes to employment practices liability, that is a federal, um, that, that, that's, that's federal law. That's federal statute. And, and the, the, the limits of liability are different.
Uh, the federal, the federal courts adopt the state statutes in any of these cases. Now, I'm telling you, the only thing in this, you've got something else you can show me that exceeds the one hundred, three hundred would be a Title VII type of civil rights due process violation.
All right, Florence, next agenda.
But anyway, we'll discuss it and, and, and look it up. And we have to, we'll call, uh, call the County Commission Association and get them put on it. I understand how you read, you can read the statute that way. But in federal court, which I've been going through for fifty years, they adopt all the state statutes unless it is a civil rights or some title. Now, the informer thing may be something that the feds have put in that I don't know about. I'm not saying that. But I'll, I'll check and make sure and get back.
Well, that, that the liability, the, the, the limitation of liability is referring to property damage and bodily injury. I have not been able to identify limitations in liability when it comes to employment practices and management liability.
I'll get you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
I'm just curious, Melissa. I want to give you a minute to catch your breath. Uh, the fifty million dollars, uh, that we were uninsured? Who, who did the appraisal to determine that we were?
Okay, so an evaluation had not been done on our buildings in at least five years, um, since before Scott Kramer left. I, along with our insurance agent, did an evaluation. Now, an appraisal for insurance is different because it's based upon replacement cost, not market value. So replacement cost is basically what it would cost if that building burnt down tomorrow. And that's not necessarily the same price as it could sell for tomorrow. Um, because the goal of insurance is it's supposed to be replaced to like kind and quality.
And who did the appraisal?
I did the evaluation along with our insurance agent. Right now.
Our current one.
Our current insurance agent.
What, ma, maybe if you, if you let us know what the, the variables were that would cause us to be fifty million underinsured? Are they, um, economic, you know, variables, commodity variables, or was it just a bad appraisal, the old one?
Well, actually, there were a couple of locations that somehow over time had dropped off of our insurance. I have no idea how, why. Um, and, and so, you know, that, that, that was one of the items.
Well, thank you for looking back into that and catching that. We appreciate it.
Um, but yeah, economic variables, supply chain issues have caused the cost to rebuild to be around two hundred square, two hundred dollars per square foot at minimum.
Thank you, Melissa. I mean, next agenda. Florence, you got a few items?
Yes, we, uh, item number seven is a bid award to regional produce distributors to provide milk and juice to the youth facility.
Again, another one, only one bid on this came in.
Correct.
One response, I guess. It was sent a, a number, I'm not sure.
The, this is an issue that's impacting education, everything, because Borden's was the company that provided, I, they were sort of, I, I don't understand all about milk and juice products for schools. There's certain guidelines. Borden's was the only, pretty much the only company providing, it looks like the sheriff can speak to this better than I can.
Borden's got out of business?
Used to, yeah.
Did they go out of business with that?
No, the problem we have, we got a milk shortage and it's hard to get milk for schools, for everybody. We're going to get shelf milk now because it's hard to get the milk products by the, the little cartons that we used to get unless you buying it by the truckload. So everybody is out, Alabama, Mississippi, Georgia, and Florida. Uh, this part of the United States has really been affected bad. So, uh, everybody's having to go out and try to get milk because you can't find it. And it went up so high. And so now we're buying shelf milk, uh, to be able to fill that void. And nobody wants to bid on it unless you're buying truckloads. They're not gonna sell you, um, say we got forty students out at the youth facility and they're getting milk five times a day because they get it with snack and with dinner and lunch and breakfast. So they're not gonna sell you a small quantity of milk, uh, unless you're gonna buy a whole truckload.
When you say shelf milk, shelf, you, I mean, that literally means getting it off the shelf?
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's shelf milk and, uh, you, you cool it, you know, refrigerate it. But it's, it's something that you can store on the shelf. That's what everybody's getting.
Okay. But you said that was a shortage. So are you able to, if they're, are you able to buy milk like a gallon and pour it into a?
You can do that. It costs, you, you pay a whole lot more for that. Yeah.
And so these items we're talking about, these are eight ounces?
Yeah. Cartons.
That's a lot of milk in a day.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we ought to rethink giving adults all this milk every day.
This is a.
At the youth facility, but they're probably older teens.
Yeah. But like I said, this is what we, you know, we require to give them milk, so.
It would be probably cheaper if we just bought some supplement, some vitamin supplements with calcium and vitamin D, right? I mean, I'm, I'm curious. I'm not trying to be funny with that meat, uh, guidelines.
Well, now the nutrition is that they're supposed to get milk, we gotta give them milk. You know, this is not just us. This is school system. This is everybody. So there's just, don't look at it as our, our, just our problem. This is a problem that's going around, uh, around this part of the, the, the United States.
The Health Department, uh, set these guidelines for, for nutrition?
That's what the nutrition, that's what we pay a nutritionist for. And this is the second time we put this milk out for bid. And last time we got zero bids. This time we got one bid.
Ms. Chair, we digressing.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, next agenda.
That, digressing didn't just start. It started at about nine AM.
Okay.
Um, item number eight is considering an alcohol license application for Latino Festival on November twelfth.
Next agenda.
And I believe.
Has that covered everybody? I think you got it.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to recess to executive session.
So moved. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, we'll be back at, uh, at the latest by ten o'clock.